Okay, this is a rerun of last month on the patrol hours, minutes is how I calculated it. Marginally better on a few things, but the time spent at City Hall was up to 20% of his entire eighty-one and a half hours for the month of September. And I just, I can't find any justification for that. The specific patrol was down some, a little more time spent at the gate. And the other thing, other thing is that the out-of-city time, meal breaks, drink breaks, and car maintenance and gasoline, I don't understand why the City of Meadow Lakes is paying for that time. But, and that's 4% of the total. And evidently, the citations were up. He did five citations and five warnings in September as opposed to two and two in August. But the golf carts with kids on golf carts is still not being addressed because I've heard two or three people fussing about that. I thought that one of them was going to be here tonight, but that is still not being addressed at all. So, it's not going to get better until y'all push the button.
Thank you, Robin. Okay. We're going to move on to standard monthly reports, briefing on utilities. Is that you, Johnny? And then, are you going to do it, Will? Whichever.
The crews, the crews in September was very busy, mainly dealing with completing the temporary pro shop in Cart Barn area. I can't really praise these guys enough because they don't back up from anything. I mean, we're fortunate that we have a really good staff, that we got welders, we got mechanics, we got carpenters, and they don't really balk at doing this stuff, which is not really in their scope of what they're employed for, is utility work. So, I can't praise them guys enough. They're just, they're just fantastic. Except for the regular reoccurring maintenance and operation, we, the water system, we had no significant issues last month, which was good. With fall upon us, you would expect water consumption to decrease, however, the average water consumption in September and August was about the same. However, last year's usage was about eighty-five hundred gallons less. But I think we had a little more rain last year. I didn't get to run those reports to find about. I think we had a little more rain in September last year than we did September of this year. That, I provided you the customer count, just to kind of give you an idea. We're not growing a whole lot, but we have grown a little bit. In September, at the end of Sept-, oh, excuse me, with fall coming upon us, it won't be long before leaves are dropping. So, in addition to doing, finishing up the pro shop, the crews are going to have to get, start geared up for leaf collection, which usually takes a week to week and a half to do. And that means just about every employee we have out there picking up leaves. The street sweeper was in action. We still have a few more minor issues that has to be resolved. It's been out of service because a part was obsolete and we had to find someone to, that had one. I talked to Scott Bridges. He said there are just a few little minor things, so hopefully, we'll start getting someone to start sweeping before the leaves fall. And I think we're going to follow the leaf collection with the sweeper. If y'all have any questions on this, I'd be glad about operations. Thank you.
Thank you, Johnny. Okay, why don't you take over the rest of them, Will? Ordnance, artist, animal, patrol, and then the building committee report. And golf, since, you know, you're the guy with golf, too.
So, for the ordinance and animal control, ordinance enforcement officer was very busy in the last month. I went along with him on two ride-alongs where we're trying to enforce the codes as they're written, based on community input. We did have some pushback on a lot of these, particularly the trashcans being viewable from the street. A lot of residents have them placed alongside their home, kind of far back, which is technically still a violation if it's visible from the street. So, last month, trashcan violations, he cited forty-five, which is a significant increase from previous months. And also went around the golf course and found twenty-two violations for notices. We got some pushback on that as well. One big one was a safety structure that was temporary, but for a backyard, so that golf balls wouldn't hit the residents while they're out there. And the homeowners were pretty frustrated. We were telling them to take it down. We also had another one where they had gotten in exemption, or a variance went through some time ago to allow a similar structure. So, that's a conversation that we'll have to have at some point, is revisiting exactly what we want the view from the golf course to be, and what concessions we want to make for any residents, so that they can have a net or a structure of some kind. Right now, trees are allowed, which help keep out some of them, but, you know, hedges can't be higher than four feet, so some people are not super thrilled at the enforcement, but it's going along and the majority of people understand that the code's the code. And anybody who had any issues, we tell them, please, you know, come to City Hall, or send us an email, or we can pass it along. Any questions with ordinance enforcement? Yes?
Somewhere I read that you talked about regular animals. We do not remove regular animals. They have to be reupplied.
Outside service.
But it's in here that we did, that we do not. Golf cart.
Yeah, and you're talking about Jerry Mason's report, the animal patrol lawsuit. Yeah.
We don't remove regular animals. Is that right?
That's right.
If the rabies involved, they were responsible for removing them.
Really?
Yes.
The issue there is, we don't know if they're rabid or not until they're tested. So, Mr. Mason guys are animal control, and if they find, they're called for animals that are usually not turned, that are out during the day, we dispose of those. Suspension is asked. Usually help them within the hour. One shot. Anyway, but there's no way of telling if they're rabid or not until they're tested by the state. Or whoever tests them.
The problem now is, we have no testing facilities. States want testing.
Is he coming?
No. So, the process was, we took the animal to the lab and burned, and then he sent the, what needed to be sent, to lab in Austin to test. But Jerry told me that the no longer, the state is no longer testing for rabies, so we got to find an outside agency.
Okay.
A private firm, too, I guess it could do it. Do any private firms do that kind of testing?
I'm assuming there's someone out there. I don't know. Fortunately, we haven't had to deal with it. I don't think we've had any, really, we've had some sick, because skunks get distempered, and they minimize rabies a lot, to some, to a large degree, with, you know, reducing their, you know, body fat, they, they, pretty well, but distemper is most prevalent last year than skunks. And that's why we have several.
Like I said, those are not coming around.
Well, yeah, there are slight times.
Okay. I'm sorry.
All right, that's okay. Keep, keep on going, just keep going down the line.
As Councilmember Peskin noted, there was, I don't think it was necessarily rabid, but a dangerous animal that was not brought back into the community because it bit a person. For patrol activity, we have instructed or directed our patrol officer to lower the threshold for the miles per hour over the speed limit, at which he'll pull someone over. And using that in conjunction with radio signs to show when you're over the speed limit, we're getting, hopefully, a little bit better compliance. He did respond to a call about potentially underage kids on a golf cart last month. When he got there, he could not find them. But we are trying to curtail those and will respond to them as soon as they are reported.
From that speed limit, flashing speed limit sign, does the city own that?
This, I believe, that is city equipment.
I'm sorry. Now, with regard.
With regard to the flashing speed limit sign, does the city own that, or does the POA?
That's, that's city property.
Okay. And are we aware, I'm aware that it's not on all the time. Is that correct? Do we know that?
It, there might be some battery issues with that, because it's supposed to be on.
I'm seeing it not on a lot. I come in and out quite a bit, like everybody else, but pay attention, because it's not on all the time. And I don't know, that's a, if it is the city's responsibility, then we need to check whatever the battery status might be.
Get those replaced.
The only, uh. The main comment I have about the golf carts is, is the weekends is when we really see the, the kids out there, and they are driving at excessive speed, you know. And also, we do have ordinances that you're not supposed to have anything like scooters, bicycles, all that kind of stuff on our golf course, and we do. And we need to enforce that ordinance, I think.
Okay. Okay. All right, oh, building committee. Building Committee for September issued one fence permit at 350 Columbine, one remodel at 300 Mahan, and new construction at 408 Hogan's. In progress, there is one fence at 20 Augusta, bordering 270 Turkey Run, one remodel at 322 Meadow Lakes, and four new constructions, 406 Hogan's Place, 107 Preston Trail, 314 Mahan, and 422 St. Andrews. One swimming pool in progress, for a total of three new issues and seven in progresses.
I'll have a comment on fences real quickly. According to our ordinance, when they do a fence, the support structures for the fence are supposed to be inside facing the property owner. We have a number of fences that have been built where it's not that way, and they're on golf course, where the structure is, support structures on the outside, not the inside. So, when we go to do the ordinances, we either need to decide if that's okay, or what, but we, but right now, they're not in compliance with the ordinances.
Yeah, the question is, we should have done that, something about it when this is built.
I know, I know. I just want to make the point that the building committee needs to be aware of that ordinance, and they may not be. If you've been here a long, long time, you probably knew it, because, but now, since we haven't codified in a while, the newer members may not be aware of that ordinance. So, that's the reason I was bringing it up.
Can I speak to that, please?
Go ahead, Mike.
Building Committee is aware of that ordinance. Microphone.
Building Committee is aware of that ordinance, and when people do build, at least since I've been on the building committee, it's been a requirement that they, the pretty side of the fence goes to the outside. So, there are some fences that are in the community that are the other way around.
Yes.
But those have been like that for some time. New fences, I don't think you'll see any new privacy fences with that situ-, with that situation.
Okay. Want to move on to the golf course?
All right. Overseated, overseeding was completed, and we're going to focus on the whole one tee box. That's the first place everyone sees when they come to our golf course and community, so we're going to try to make that look as nice as possible. We'll have some minor improvements going on with that in the next week. They should be getting in there. We had tournament play this past weekend that went, went well. Our golf pro, David, is recovering from illness and should be back when he's better, which shouldn't be more than a couple of weeks, hopefully. In the meantime, Isaiah is covering very well, as well as the other staff up there. We have communication with David, so things are going well there. Any questions on golf operations? All right? And keep going on to the.
Consent, huh?
Oh.
Consent items, I want to do, I want to get those behind us. We're going to do, we're going to approve them both at the same time, but you want to give a brief, a brief summary of the financials first?
Yeah, both are available in your packets, both the minutes and the statements. Closing out our year, we have, and beginning our next, approximately fourteen million dollars in assets. Seven point five million of those are in our construction fund. The general fund has approximately six hundred and thirty thousand dollars in cash. The utility fund has one million seventy-eight thousand, and recreation has two hundred and twenty-five. The general fund cash reserves show more going out than coming in, and this is in large part due to federal funds that we, were kind of allocated separately, that are, were held within the general fund, but are not part of our regular operation, operating budget. Anyways, just wanted to give you those details.
In other words, about 1.9 million is in our operating accounts, plural, and then the rest of it, the rest of the, whatever it was, fourteen million is, is in the account that will be paid out for the construction.
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
Over time. Okay.
I, I make a motion that we accept the consent items.
Well, we haven't, we haven't, I haven't asked first about the minutes. Is there any corrections on the minutes first?
Yeah.
You have one, Barbara?
I think I do, just a minute.
Okay.
We had two meetings in September. We had a joint meeting between PFC and the City Council.
Right, back to back.
And then we had a rigor meeting.
Right.
So, the minutes for the joint meeting, I don't know. Okay. I have a problem with those minutes. I feel you don't list everybody that attended, like, you don't have anybody from PFC, and maybe just have the City Council. And yet, with the joint meeting, if you can have a joint meeting, it's everybody that's part of it and where it is. And also, I think we need to talk to Johnny about what the minutes should read, because he has minutes and you have minutes, but they really should be one set minutes. Would you agree with me?
They're separate organizations.
Well, I think they're separate.
They're separate.
Joint meeting is a joint meeting, therefore, is joint minutes. You can't say a joint meeting is separate from the unit, separate from each other, that's not a joint meeting.
I mean, yeah, we're splitting hairs here, but I see why a PFC would want to have their own, just say, well, I'm not going to piggyback on the, on the City Council. Our minutes are our minutes, their minutes are their minutes, and even though they have the same exact words, they're still separate, I think. Yeah, just, just my thought on it. However, I would, I would make sure you put it, attendees, and it doesn't have to be just council members, that any, any guests or other people that attend will add them too. I guess PFC would be guests, but I don't want to get into that. Okay.
At all.
That's all, very good. So, now there's a motion in order to.
I make a motion that we accept the consent items.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Bruce, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Three and a half, okay? Okay, let's move on to old business, the update on the community complex. And I see Johnny's name on this one. Johnny, you want to go?
Yeah, this kind of, we'll have to tag team.
Okay, both, both of you have that in.
This is basically on the news update on Cart Barn.
Okay, great.
And its budget. As I mentioned earlier, that utility crews have been working on the, very busy on temporary golf shop and renovating Cart Barn. We've made significant progress in the last month, in September. Hopefully, we'll have it completely dried in and siding on by the end of next week. The electrical wise, we're almost, we're probably about seventy percent completing that. Big holdup is PEC, is getting us the power. Hopefully, hopefully, we'll get that soon. Basically, at, at the end of September, we'd spend a hundred and four thousand dollars on this project. The original budget for this project was two hundred and fifty thousand. We're going to come in probably one seventy-five. So, we're coming in considerably less, which is reflected into the numbers that you'll, what we're talking about here in just a little bit. So, so we're coming in under budget. When Don Wheeler and I developed this budget, we had a lot of unknowns, but as we go, it seems to be panning out. And that includes the temporary, well, includes, I'm going to say, includes the storage building that we had planned to build on the back part, that we may build on the front part of the tennis courts for utilization by the, for food and beverage operations during the time the restaurant and, or the building is being demoed and rebuilt. The budget, actually, for the whole thing will be covered under another agenda. I have it here in just a little bit. But do you have any questions?
Yes, I do.
Yes.
I noticed the way they have built the, for their, our temporary pro shop, they, the, where the carts go in to be washed, you know, it's a steep.
Right.
Area. And then we have the cart path by number one. So, at one time, you'd said we were going to do something separate, so that we can keep the carts going into the cart barn off of the cart path playing golf. So, that's still.
They'll be able to pull into the cart barn completely.
Okay.
So, there's a whole, there's a whole row on the right side of that way. If you're looking at that building, the whole, whole hundred feet, or whatever it is in that building, there's nothing on that, against that wall.
Okay. Are we going to have the people using the golf carts pull it in, or are we going to have our people? And the reason I ask is because.
I know, it is.
It's very steep.
They shouldn't, my opinion, and Will and I have kicked this around several times about how that's, the whole operation, is basically, I, I think city employee should be pulling it in. They should not have access, no one should have access beyond the garage door into that building.
Okay, that was my point, because I could just see them going, making that corner really fast, and there goes the golf cart off of the ramp.
Yeah, we're going to put hand railings, because anything over eighteen inches, we have to, or something like that.
Okay.
I can't remember, but we're going to have to put some hand railings to keep someone from walking off the sides of it, in case they do walk up there.
Yeah.
And then the out ramp, hopefully, will use asphalt, because it's considerably cheaper, but I won't know that until next, hopefully, next week. But, you know, basically, the plans is, the whole front of that will be asphalted all the way to the cart path, and we've even kicked around, maybe if we got the money, is to, to enlarge the cart path, make it the same for ways down there, and kind of blend it all in with asphalt. But, and then the actually entrance, the ADA entrance will be from the side. So, you'll be walking across the sidewalk into the building for ADA, but we'll put steps in front as well. But, because of the.
We had to make the ramp.
Zigzag the ramp, basically, probably to get the ADA requirements for elevation.
So, if all of that's asked. So, if all of that's asphalted, will that cause us a drainage issue?
That's something, it, it, there is some concerns about that, and that was one of the concerns about maybe doing the cart path as well as the parking area, is try to get that water reserve, resolved, and get it onto the golf course and on down. Yeah, right now, it's kind of, with, we put the new driveway ramp in, it kind of created an issue.
Yeah.
Uh, either we'll fill and shed that water to the cart barn, or to the cart path, or, but we're gonna have to address some of the water coming off, and that's something we'll have to, I'll probably have to get with Zach and Ryan, 'cause I don't know the water that will be coming off the new building. So, so there's probably some, some work we still have to do in there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I think one, one time we were talking about maybe the end of October, when the first building would be done.
Yes, sir, uh.
Is that, that's probably gonna slip a little bit, isn't it?
Yeah, we're looking, hopefully, to be in by Thanksgiving. We're about a month behind. Uh, as it stands right now, we should have everything ready for the shoot rock people, the drywall people to come in around the first of the month, first of November. Uh, I don't think it'll take them probably less than a week, so then we'll start doing the final cleanup, touch up, and everything. Currently, what we're building, if you see, we're, we're putting a porch on the front of it now. Uh, it'll be about nine foot, ten foot covered, but the, almost all of the concrete will be covered, or I guess it all will be, I'm sorry, will, all will be.
I have one more question. Were we able to get another toilet in the ladies restroom?
No way. Unfortunately, the concrete was already poured.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it'll be, uh, two, two stalls, one stall and a urinal.
And I know, and the guys have more, so I know.
Yeah, well, we could, urinals are a whole lot easier to plumb than the toilets. So, yeah, no, I talked to our, our expert plumber, this volunteer plumber, and he said, not without jackhammer, there's just no way.
Okay.
Uh, Johnny, Johnny, one more.
Oh, yes.
How we're tag teaming. We, we set this up, uh.
Oh, good.
So, no, I was gonna ask, the, the first building's entirely us, we, we're, we're paying for the whole thing and so forth. The second building, the, uh, operator's gonna be paying for a portion of it. Does he, does he pretty well know exactly what he's paying for?
No, I don't, I, I'm not sure.
Okay, 'cause I don't even know really, to be honest with you.
Because the, the ballpark, I mean, you know, we talked about, nothing's in stone at this time, but basically, we, we were building the shell. Just wood studs, garage door, windows, doors. His requirement would be to, uh, complete the interior, all the plumbing, electrical, to meet his needs, not ours. And he'd have to do all of that, and once, and the way the tentative agreement is written right now is, once that's done, and they, they do leave, they have to restore the building to the original condition. So, I mean, the vent hood is a big problem, 'cause they're gonna have to cut a big hole somewhere, and the roof are on the side. So, but they have to put it back in condition. Is that, is that what you remember it will?
That's right.
Yeah, so, so, but, but we have the money and that hundred and seventy-five to do that, 'cause, of course, this is a little nicer building than what we were gonna build, 'cause we wasn't gonna, we were probably gonna pour curb and use asphalt and try to get by, so we're, we're spending a little extra. Okay.
The President's response to put it in, requires a question as well?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes, that's, they're balking about that, but that's just the way it's gonna be. They have to. Nope, nope, you can't have vent hood without, nope. And then, the, you know, those requirements, of course, I was kind of jumping the gun a little bit. Those requirements include health department inspection, a whole bunch of stuff that we didn't require currently. So, so.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The next item is under old business is, uh, the, the siren. Did Garrett say anything to you? 'Cause he's on the agenda, and he's not here.
Okay, I'll tag team.
Okay.
I talked to Garrett yesterday, and he's in Florida, so he could make the meeting. Uh, we discussed.
Business.
Yeah, he's in Tampa, I think. Uh, unfortunately, it does not appear that we're gonna be eligible for any of the FEMA or the state grants.
Oh.
The reasoning behind it, from what the grant writer told me, was that they're concentrating on those areas that really got devastated by the floods and are more susceptible to flooding. That doesn't mean in the future, but, uh, Will and I had talked, and I talked to Garrett, we all talked, and, uh, we're gonna try and apply to LCRA or PEC, basically, it's LCRA PEC grant, yeah, and see if we can, as maximum amount there is twenty-five thousand, so.
One month, right?
I think we gotta have a month to get it, and it's a pretty simple application, from what I understand, so we'll get together and we'll start working on that pretty soon. Uh, I hadn't talked to the electronic, the, the, uh, siren providers, but we're, I, we've got a little concern, uh, about the elevation of the siren, especially in the pecan bottom, 'cause it's, they've got them elevated at twenty feet, and the one that they're putting for the pecan bottom area is pretty close to where Carolyn used to live on the golf course. My problem with that, one thing, we don't have power there. So, I'm, and the other is, at twenty feet, you're gonna be blowing right into people's houses. Uh, I mean, that's the purpose of it, but.
Yeah.
But, but, uh, so the elevation, and that's something we'll have to work with them about. I, I just briefly touched base with them about it, and I think we can probably raise it to thirty, so it'd be shooting over the houses, and move it to the children's park. Uh, where we have, hopefully, we'll have power by the time, uh, the sirens are installed. The one at the wastewater plant does not make any difference, 'cause there's no one around. Uh, but we'll have to probably move it a hundred feet or so, just because of power, to have power to it too, so, sorry.
And the whole intent of this is to warn the residents of impending danger?
Yes, sir.
Well, do, do, do they have to test them every week or every month or something like that?
There, there is some testing requirements, and this is an electronic system, so, I mean, uh, I don't know how much detail y'all went into, this, this little entire electronic system. You can have voice over it, so you can actually access it and put out a message by voice. Uh, the testing to meet FEMA requirements will be done, uh, subsonic, subsonic, I don't know, or you can't hear it.
Oh.
Yeah, it, it'll be done at a, so it does test and verify it, uh, so.
The dogs will hear it.
Sir?
The dogs will.
Dogs might hear it. So, I don't know what frequency it's at, uh, but he did, they said, but to meet FEMA requirements, they do that to keep from blaring, 'cause it has to be tested once a month to meet, for FEMA requirements. Of course, we don't have to really meet FEMA requirements.
We can't hear the, uh, golf course whistle or whatever it is on seven when it goes on.
We're kind of, kind of jumping the gun again. We're, we're working on that a little bit, 'cause the plans is to, uh, the first one will be installed at the pro shop, right behind number one tee. We're gonna go up and put one, there, this is, the first one's cheap. I mean, within four, five hundred bucks. The remote ones are probably fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars, because we have to have the, the radio, all that stuff to trigger them. So, hopefully, number, on number one, we'll get there, it's gonna go up about twenty feet, twenty-five feet, depends on what we've got. And of course, the little map cameras on it too, that was the main purpose, but then we started kicking it around, said, well, you know, just replace the mount, uh, and then just push a button in the pro shop, you know, it'll go off. So, hopefully, that will help some. It's not gonna get, you know, the, the problem with the pecan bottom is, when the leaves are gone, you probably can hear it, but when the leaves are there, you can't hear anything. And then on the other side, you know, back towards, uh, the cemetery side, there's, there's nothing, you can barely hear it there. So, we're working on it, but that's another project. It's separate from this one. Hey, I'm sorry, any other questions?
Well, I just disagree with the, uh, the guy, the grant writer, he says we're not susceptible to floods. We're susceptible to floods, but it's due to floodgate operations, not due to the rain here.
Yeah, well, I'm, I probably missed quality.
Floodgate operations flood you just as much.
I, I misquoted him. I think they're concentrating on the areas that was, uh, devastated by the recent floods.
Oh, yeah, okay.
You know, that's where they're concentrate putting them, you know, in the, in those areas. Uh, I think on the river basins and stuff like that, instead of, um, supposedly a constant level lake, so hopefully.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, John, I appreciate that, uh, filling in for Garrett. Uh, and that was July fourth. Okay, we're gonna say something about, and I guess this is carryover from last meeting, I don't, let's see the.
This one, we wanted to get an attorney's opinion, and she got.
I can't hear you.
Sorry. Uh, this is old business from last time, and I think that we should table this and potentially discuss it in executive session.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do, we, do we, we did, as of when I visited you this afternoon, we had not had an attorney's opinion on it.
I did get an attorney opinion.
You did get it later on?
And that's not really why we need to go to executive session. She just said that it, you know, if this were, uh, to be covered by the city, that could be legal, is all she, that the opinion was.
I know, that's my concern too.
So, she needs to give us a little bit more guidance on that and probably have some discussion.
Okay, sounds good.
I make a motion we table item, uh, eight, C.
That's, that has to do with, uh, storm sewer backup.
Yes.
We had a guest here last time, uh, that talked about it. Okay, any second?
No, second.
Okay, second, brought by Bruce, all in favor of tabling this, uh, item? Thank you. We will do that. We'll put it on the agenda for November. So, uh, that, that concludes old business. New business, I'm gonna move up, uh, from order, I'm gonna move D up to the first part. The fourth item, it's, uh, discussion and action of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh six, amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget to transfer a hundred and fifty thousand for the general fund and a hundred, a hundred and, uh, a hundred thousand even for the utility fund cash reserves. You wanna explain it?
Yeah, yeah, uh, well, moving it up first, because B and C are related to the project, and we don't want to potentially approve a project without having funds for it. And Johnny was talking to me about that a little earlier. Uh, this hundred and fifty and one hundred thousand are for the project, uh, the community center project that we'll be discussing, you know, a little bit more tonight, um, and we need to amend our budget, because it's such a substantial amount. So, we have an attached ordinance here as well, um, to reflect accurately what these funds would be used for. That would bring the total to three hundred thousand from the general fund and one hundred from utility for next year for this project.
So, it's gonna be covered for the building we're building too, I assume?
Well, uh, yeah, for, but.
Yeah.
For the, the entirety of the project, or the.
This supplement, whatever we, whatever we got. Okay, all, uh, any discussion?
I make a motion we, uh, approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh five, amending the FY twenty twenty-six budget to transfer three hundred thousand from the general fund and a hundred thousand from the utility fund cash reserves.
One hundred fifty thousand, not three hundred thousand.
No.
One hundred additional, three hundred.
Okay, okay, total.
I'm just reading the ordinance.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, um, from, uh, and a hundred thousand from the utility fund cash reserves conditionally for the purpose of funding the community center project.
Well, just, just to clarify, are, are we, we're, we're amending it to add one fifty, that it'll make the total three hundred, right?
So, total amount will be four hundred.
Four hundred thousand dollars.
One hundred of which is from utility. One hundred and fifty was existing in.
Right.
Already from general and a hundred and fifty additional from general.
So, the, so the, what I'm getting at is the, uh, the, the amendment, or the, yeah, the, the adjustment is a hundred and fifty thousand though, isn't it?
Well, the ordinance is written as three hundred thousand.
Uh, two hundred fifty thousand, the ordinance is written as two hundred fifty thousand. You've already done a hundred fifty thousand.
That's right, we've already, we already have a hundred and fifty thousand in it.
Then we, this is wrong, then, we can't do it.
We, we, we can do.
No.
Do we amend the budget for the first a hundred and fifty thousand, or was it in the budget?
It was in the budget for the first hundred and fifty thousand.
We don't need to add it.
But what I'm saying is that the ordinance is in incorrect.
What page is that ordinance on?
It's on page forty-four, and it's ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh five, which means that we can't approve it then, if that's not what we're transferring. It's, yeah, it's page forty-four in our packet.
It's not showing on page forty-four.
Not, I don't see it on page forty-four.
Isn't it, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh five?
What's that, oh, six?
It's oh six.
Nine D.
Oh six, dash oh six.
Well, it's.
You might have had to have written your version.
Uh, well. Okay. It's nine D, right?
Yeah.
Okay, well, nine D, on the agenda I have says, amending the FY twenty twenty-six budget to transfer.
Page seventy-two.
Huh?
Seventy-two, page seventy-two.
Thank you.
Well, the, I don't have that, I mean, the, the memorandum I had was.
I show seven, seventy-one, I've got seventy-one.
I was just reading what they said the ordinance was.
Well, that's what it says right here. That's what the ordinance says, a hundred fifty, a hundred fifty and a hundred thousand.
But that's seven D. We're talking about nine D, right?
No, it's six, actually, it's, uh, six, seven, it's seven, I didn't get it.
All right, so then I, did we?
Oh, seven, I think that the, this is just miss, there's a, there's a, uh, an error. Follow, the number following six is number nine, and so it should be, it should be seven on the agenda, but the agenda's not correct, but, uh, but the ordinance is correct.
Okay, well, then, the table is wrong. When I tabled the motion, it's wrong, 'cause I was going by, I was going by what, uh.
Well, no, there's nothing that's.
Oh, no, okay, so.
You're, you're correct on, on what you tabled.
Okay, so this is supposed to be seven, not nine.
That's just, yeah, it's just a, it's just an error of the agenda numbering system.
Okay, so it's seven D, not nine D.
Seven D, not nine D.
Well.
Tell you about that, I did not see that that was nine, I saw seven.
Why don't you got different thing than I got? Mine's a seven D.
Yeah, it is seven, it says seven D here.
Well, when I picked this up, mine is, I picked mine up. Did, did everything change?
Correct, because they, um, I know Johnny and Will, I think, so there was a new package, yeah, we picked general.
Okay, all right, then I.
But, but I think that what, what it says on the agenda and what it says on the ordinance is the same, so that we're clear.
All right, then somebody else, 'cause I don't have the.
Barbara, you do you wanna, you wanna, uh, propose it? Okay, Carolyn can do it.
Oh, okay, so you totally, oh, I see what it, so the whole thing got changed.
Yeah.
You wanna do that one?
Okay, all right, then, uh, I make the motion that we accept item seven D, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh six, amending the FY twenty twenty-six budget to transfer a hundred and fifty thousand from the general fund and a hundred thousand from the utility fund cash reserves conditionally for the purpose of funding the community center project.
Very good, yeah. Bruce seconds, okay.
No, I think Barbara seconded.
Barbara seconded, okay. Any, let's discuss it if, if, if need be. Do you wanna explain any of it, Will?
I think we've discussed it.
Are, are we discussing plenty, plenty? Okay, I think, I think we just did, when we were kind of going over the wording. So, if you're ready for a vote, I'm gonna call the vote, all in favor? Okay, it's unanimous.
Okay.
Good. Now then, uh, I don't know, the, the, item A, under seven A, which shows here is nine A, but, uh, seven A is discussion about Vive, uh, and their gig city technology, I guess, is a better way, way to say it.
So, they're, they were.
They're not here, though.
They, they're not here. They're planning on being here this month, but they're having a survey crew come out this week to get a little bit more information. So, we'll probably go ahead and move that to next month, uh, but to give you the idea of what it is, in talking with Vive, we're exploring the possibility of entering a partnership to bring fiber throughout all of Meadow Lakes, which would be more reliable, or marginally more reliable, as a newer network, but also much faster than, um, non-fiber connections.
When you say we are bringing, who are you talking about? I mean, we've got Vive and Northerly here. Does Northerly have Vive?
Vive is Northerly.
That is, Vive is Northerly.
Vive is Northerly.
Alpha Foot here.
So, this, this company I'm talking to is Vive.
Okay.
Yep, so, um, it would be a similar structure to how we have set up with waste management, um, and it remains to be seen if it would be financially feasible for both the city, for residents, and for Vive. So, they're gonna get a little bit more information about how much it would cost them to put fiber in, and then we'll, we'll go from there.
So, it's gonna cost us as residents more money?
Not necessarily. It, it could, but, um, I, I don't have any hard numbers. But it's, it's that we would, um.
I think that's important.
It would be important, and we, we would have to see what. what ki- kinda transition there would be for current customers. I talked a little bit about that with them, that they wouldn't wanna force anybody off any plans. We'd wanna see how many new customers they would get and if they could have an affordably priced plan that people would wanna buy where they're still, you know, reaching their monetary goals. And then the city would be the ones facilitating the billing, which saves some money for them, um and then gives a more direct line of communication with residents, but um
Well
Bottom line, we're gonna table this till next month at least.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah, we, we kinda discussed some of the things we need to ask, uh, ask Vive though.
Vive can be here to present, give you a better, good information.
Well, I know, I just upgraded them from, uh it was three hundred megabytes per second to one gig and it's ended up with thought when they did all the stuff, it's about four dollars more a month. Yeah, but uh, but how long that lasts, we don't know, so those are the questions, yeah.
Well, I just wondered about franchise fee versus an upgrade, like you say, on the uh, on, on the uh, or surcharge that the city gets in on the action to a couple of dollars a month.
Okay.
Okay, let's move on.
So, well, before we move on, is this upgrade to their box or is it to the house?
Uh both, they'd be putting in completely new
Cause it doesn't make sense, just go to their box and then have cover going to the house.
No. Yep.
Yeah.
Kinda defeats the purpose.
Yeah.
And they've been calling clients about this, uh five clients, and they've called me about changes.
To fiber optic, optic?
I don't remember what B was.
Okay. Okay, uh so let's move on then, did we, we did table that, right? So uh let's move on to B, let's see. B is a action and discussion of a hundred percent final design of the community res- uh community center project.
All right, so we do, we have had the designs out and this is, these are some three D renderings as well as the site plan. Um there's two more items on our agenda, including this, related to our community center. So this is an opportunity to go over the designs that are finalized one more time. Um here's the floor plan, I know that's kinda small, here it is labeled coming up, so this is the design. Overall, we'd have total air conditioning space of eleven thousand, almost five hundred feet. We have covered patios of almost three thousand feet, pool area that's considerably larger than ours now, a large pool deck, and a hundred and twenty-five parking spaces. The uh, continuing on, sorry, that left one's a little blurry, these are the three D rendered images. Uh pools cut off a little bit there on the left. And that one's a little s- small.
That's the backside there, the big, large one.
Yeah. But going back to the designs, um I think you've all seen the designs before, we did have a little motion at the ninety percent and not much has changed since then. Yes.
Are we ready to discuss, discuss it?
Absolutely.
Okay, I have three questions, one, we had a lady
We had a lady come here and give us a discussion about water. We are in desperate need of water in this area, am I correct? She said we were running out of water, blah, 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 blah. So I would think that all this grass around here, and Johnny suggested that we do, what kinda grass?
Turf.
Turf, that we don't do real grass, because we don't need to water, okay?
Yeah, I, cause I think that's what they've been talking about, is all around the pool, that's just, that's gonna be artificial.
Everywhere that you think you got grass, put astroturfing.
And I think also, there's no design yet for the landscaping, so uh when they draw this, they put all this grass in. I don't think any of us want any, all of that grass, we will try to make it a little more um zero landscaping.
And where we have the flag, which they've got grass?
Uh no, because there's no water there, so we'll have to again do something that's artificial, I think, because there's no way to get, there's no way to water that little, that little island.
No, no. The other thing about water is the shower in the pool, why do we need a shower in the pool? We never had a shower in the pool.
We don't have a shower in the pool.
The darn thing I saw, out here shows a shower in the pool.
Yeah, we do, we do.
I thought
We do.
Exterior wall, uh-huh.
Oh, just the exterior wall, yeah, we have the splash pad.
That's water, we don't need to spend any more water than necessary, so if somebody's out there taking a shower, they can go home and take the shower. Sorry.
First off First off, our irrigation system for the golf course, and I would assume the area is all gray water.
Is what, sir?
Gray water, it's
We, you mean like
We don't use, we don't use potable water.
Really? Well, that's good to know.
It's non-potable water, it's water that comes from our sewer plant
Yeah, I know it.
and water that we get from Marble Falls occasionally, so it's not any water coming out of our water system.
Good, good to know.
So uh that kinda negates that one concern of yours.
Absolutely.
As far as the shower goes, they produce showerheads now that have low-flow capabilities that use minimal amount of water. Uh even, and that would be potable water, I would hope.
Yeah, I don't wanna be showering.
Right, no, I would
In gray water, nah.
Anyway, but they're, they're, they're low, they're low-flow, they put them in houses nowadays, so uh just like your toilets or uh low-flow toilets, uh so I think that's a minimal concern as well. Uh and a shower would not be on all the time, just when an individual pushes a button or you know, we can time it, we can put those buttons on there where it runs for a short period of time and then it's off, it shuts off on its own. So, and that's, that's not a cost factor at all. So I, I think that as far as the water usage goes, we're more concerned, we would be more concerned with the water that the residents use for irrigation and their sprinkler systems, which is our potable water system here, so
All right.
as far as the new construction goes, I don't think that's gonna be an issue.
Well, Mike, would, would the water go into the drainage system and down to the sewer plant, which then gets recycled back up to the golf course anyway?
Mm-hmm.
So when your people are taking a shower, it goes into the drains, which goes to wastewater plant, which comes back to the golf course, the water's in the golf
Okay.
So I don't, I don't think it's uh, I don't think, we're not taking anything from Lake Marble Falls and, and using, using it to take showers.
What was your third question?
And my third thing is really not a question, but Pro Shop has two entrances. They are very small, they don't have enough room for storage, they're gonna have to carry stuff up some stairs to store stuff, so why do we need two entrances? Can we not close off one so they can use that to store stuff against the wall?
I think it's more for entrance, you know, for entrance and exits, because one is from the front and then one is the side where the uh
I'm gonna call on Ryan Nash to help us out on that one.
The section efforts, I'm trying to see the
Come on up to the podium, Ryan.
Yeah.
Correctly, the second door would, is off a hallway, that would be an egress door for that, that wing of the building. The Pro Shop just has a primary entrance on the front of the building.
Right there, that second door, that's in hallway, yeah.
That's a hallway.
That's a hallway door, you would, you would need that for egress purposes.
And this is hallway here, bathrooms, and this is the Pro Shop.
That's the way you get out, yeah.
And you really need two entrances?
I don't think the code would allow you to have that long of a distance off of it, off of a hallway like that without having an exit door.
Well, I think you need, keep the hallway entrance, cause I think Johnny said that was a fire exit or something, but why do you have to have the other entrance? Seriously, they have a major problem with storage, as you know, from the drawings.
Well, as you're, I would, and this is just a, a comment on, on the design, and it would be just my comment, thinking through, when you're accessing the building, you're gonna be approaching it from that front side, it would make sense to have the Pro Shop facing the front entry.
Yeah.
That would make sense to me, and it's probably why the, the design team designed it that way.
Came up with it.
And it's no steps, right, Ryan?
Uh, correct, there's a, there's, there's a no step ADA entrance, there's also some steps off to the side, but there, there is ADA access.
Okay, just saying.
Okay, you may wanna go back to it and use it and just let everybody know what those rooms are.
Oh, the flex room, what is the flex room for?
Okay, you are, you see where five is the flex room, all right, then there's a conference, there's a little off of it to the left is a conference room, so the idea of the flex room, it'll have TVs in it so that we could hold city council meetings and then we have a conference room if we have to go into executive session. So that also has doors that goes out to a covered patio and so that uh it can be rented out for people if they want workshops or they have some kinda party or whatever. Uh and then if you go across the hallway up from the five, down, you know, right across from it, no, go back
Downward, downward.
There's two card rooms there and then at the end of that hallway are the bathrooms for that end of the building and the Pro Shop. Then if you go to the center, one is the entrance way, two is the lobby. And then uh you'll see fourteen is the bar area and then you have the restaurant, the dining room, and then that part there is another meeting room that's, that's closed off. Did you do the, the ri- uh architectural renderings?
I don't have the interior ones.
Oh, I thought you were gonna do the interior ones, okay, I told people.
So we don't have a simulator, right?
No.
And we don't have a bar and grill anywhere?
Yes, okay, number, you'll see the kitchen is four, that's where the kitchen is. There are windows out to the um pool area for them to order and there's also a window, I I think out there, so that is, the bar is fourteen and it's a, it's kind of a, a horseshoe. And then the dining, and it has tables and chairs in that area too. Then the dining room is the three, but it's only half, because the other half, there's a low wall with, with glass that goes all the way to the top with two doors that, so you can have that as a meeting room. Okay.
So they can sit outside and, and order food in the restaurant?
Yes, yes, so they can, and uh is all the covered patio all up there.
Okay, thank you.
And then if you go straight out, that's where that we're gonna have the new putting green, so you'll be able to see the putting green from the patios.
All right, thank you.
Is that what you were gonna say, Will?
Oh, I'm sorry, I just kinda
Well done, well done. Total parking spaces, is that official or is that total including existing?
I think that's total including.
So we're adding about, what, twenty-five?
Don't we have eighty, don't we have eighty something now?
Parking spaces, we're adding how many?
Don't we have eighty something?
It's probably about accurate, I don't have the site plan, but we're adding, I was, it's in that range, I would have to count there.
The, the issue we had with that is we had what, another forty-five or fifty parking spaces originally? But the issue came in with stormwater, because they take another stormwater pond, and so those parking spaces become very expensive real quick.
Okay, and you have a place for buses to park?
The grass, grass area will still be available after the building's built.
Okay. But it's my understanding, if anybody from the citi- if, if citizens wanted to come and see the renderings, we have, we have them available here at City Hall.
We've got them, we can put those up online too.
Okay. Cause I think they were interested to see what the interior, what we were planning for that.
Okay. Are we gonna approve this? Let's go ahead.
I'm sorry, we, we had a discussion this morning at, at Dollar this afternoon ago. You're not gonna take down that sixty-year-old oak tree, are you?
No.
No.
Thank you.
No, that's what took us all, yeah, yeah.
Good, thank you.
Where is it? The, the really big one out there by the putting green and then the other one in the back, you know?
Okay. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's why the design was done around those.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I wanted to get to.
Yeah, okay.
It's, it's in the designs.
Yeah.
Do we wanna take a vote on this? Let's take a vote on approving it.
These are final plan?
Yeah.
Yep, these are final.
Good. Some ready for this.
Is there a motion to accept the design?
I'll make a motion to accept uh for the mayor to sign contracts with Nash Builders.
Well, no, that's not, that's not this, B, B.
No, not that, that's it.
So, make a motion for one hundred percent approval of the final designs of the community center project.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, good, we've had our review, everyone's had a chance to look at these drawings, to sit out and then we have the large drawings. Okay, uh now then we're gonna move on to authorizing the mayor to decide, sign a contract with Nash Builders for the community center project. The met, the, the, the uh sample contract is in the, is in the uh package here. I don't know, did, did we get back for, get the legal opinion yet? We hadn't this, this morning, before this afternoon when I was here.
No, that's um
Okay, well, let's make it consider, let's make it uh subject to
Sir, these are the worst documents I've ever seen.
I know, I know.
I couldn't
To me, they're, I think they're just, I think they're just uh interim contracts, because
But how can we approve something we can't agree?
We're not, we
No, and bear with me, uh we're not gonna approve that, we're gonna approve the ability of, of the mayor to sign the contract with Nash, subject to legal approval, that's all we have from her so far.
Cause, yeah, cause when we, we started this, this, this is a ball play, correct me back there, y'all know what, it's a ball play that's due by everyone, legal did review it when we initiated the general manager at risk program, so legal has actually reviewed the documents.
To the point, yeah.
Okay.
So that was all done and wrapped up first.
Yes, the, the attorney reviewed those uh initially and they're, the contracts issued by the American Institute of Architects is the standard form contract that's used uh across the country, really.
Ryan, was this a, was this a, a exhibit to the contract to be filled in and signed at a later time, which is now?
That's correct, initially, the, the initial contract, this is an amendment to it to add the final total contract amount guaranteed maximum price.
Right. Mostly, mostly its purpose is just put that number in there and maybe a start date or something like that and terms of a add-ons, which hopefully won't happen. Okay. So let me, let's, let's sug- suggest we authorize the mayor to sign the contract with Nash Builders subject to legal appro- final legal approval, because I think she still wants to go through and look at it again, and she hadn't done that.
Yeah, but I just, uh mayor, I just thought, you know, the background from the, the memorandum, just if we would read it out loud, just for the benefit of the residents to know what the, it says what the cost
What page is that? Well, you don't, you're
Well, it was the old forty-one.
How much? Forty-five?
Now it's forty-five, okay.
Okay. The background uh on our package is, the contract between the city and Nash Builders outlines the responsibility that Nash has in constructing the approved building designs for the amount listed. Any additional costs are the construction managers', that is Nash's responsibility. The total contract amount is six million seven hundred thousand. The entire project is eight million three hundred and eighty-five thousand, with the city being responsible for one million six hundred and eighty-five thousand of work outside the construction manager's responsibility, see the cost uh attached. Recommendation, if there are no objections to the design or price, I recommend entering this contract and beginning construction. Of course, the construction won't begin until we finish our, our side of it, our bill, our Pro Shop.
So let me help you understand, we have a bond for seven point five million, but we're signing a contract for eight something million?
No.
No, six point seven million.
Six point seven million.
We've added these other things, with like, like this building that Johnny talked about earlier, we've added, we've added that since the, since the design, so that's on our, it's on our uh nickel. Is that right? Would you say that's right, Johnny?
Yes, sir, it, it includes architectural engineering uh actions, fees, so it includes a whole bunch of stuff. Yeah, he's a great player.
He always says, I'll show you what that is.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's, it, it's Willis Engineering too, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's all, all the engineering that's, that Nash is not doing, that we had in our hip pocket, it's, it's gone over, but uh we still had it there.
One thing I wanna caution is one unknown, it's hit us and, and is, the stormwater permit is required by L C R A. What we thought was not gonna be a whole lot of money, we don't know yet, that could be twenty thousand dollars or it may be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We don't know until we get to the end, because they threw a bunch of stuff back at Willis that re- involved maybe having enlarged the pond, number ten pond, and if we have to do that, we're way out of budget, so, but that was something, we don't know yet, we won't know. Ho- hopefully we'll know shortly, cause uh Willis and them are working on it, hopefully they can Ho- hopefully we'll know shortly, 'cause, uh, Willis and them are working on it, hopefully they can negotiate this out, uh, where it's not gonna cost us an arm and a leg. But just forewarn you, there may be another expense that we don't, we have a control over, basically.
With respect to the agenda, I don't know, we're, we're proving, we're, we're doing, we're approving the ability to sign the contract with, with, uh, Ryan Nash, Nash Builders, L, LTD.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, I make a motion that we, uh, authorize the mayor to sign contracts with Nash Builders for the community center project.
Subject to approval?
Subject to, go ahead and say, "Subject to legal approval."
Approved by legal?
Oh, subject to approval by legal.
Yeah.
Okay.
All in favor? Very good, thanks, thanks, unanimous, uh, like the minutes reflected was unanimous. Item C, authorized, no, no, we didn't, we didn't C.
We're in E now.
We're in E, authorize the mayor to sign a lease with the PFC. This was sort of a, we knew that was, knew that was coming, but we, we got to, uh, we, we terminated the lease with the PFC back effective October first, and now then the PFC has, uh, named an operator for the, for the bar, I guess, just the bar, Barbara, is that right?
I'm sorry? Yes, sir.
Yeah, you're, you're...
For the bar owner.
Yeah, so, but we, but we need to, we need to paper, paper the actual lease to the PFC for the city.
And when are we gonna see that lease? I mean, you're gonna sign it, but when is the PFC and the city council gonna see the lease before you sign it?
Will, do you know?
Well, uh, waiting for the attorney to get back any...
Same thing, same old thing, she's about three or four things.
So, I thought here was awful.
This is, you're right, it is, it's terrible. I don't like a lot of the language. We kinda have...
So, we'll have to meet to, to, to approve that, and then you can sign it, right? Am I wrong?
You're not wrong.
You're not wrong, that's correct, that's correct. Right, we can just, we can just table that one for right now, until we, until we do meet to, to do it, 'cause I don't see a reason to, to do that now, and we don't even know what it is.
They have started.
Course, it's also between just city entities and so forth, so we shouldn't have a big argument with the PFC.
So, you wanna table this between the city and the city?
Yeah, let's table it, we'll, we'll do it, it sounds like we might have to do it, either next month's meeting or call a special one to do it. Whenever, whenever the documents are ready, I'm ready to decide. I, I think we need to do it sooner rather than later.
And that lease agreement is just for now with the bar?
Correct, it's all, it's totally the bar, yeah.
But they shouldn't, shouldn't be later on, 'cause they're gonna build that, that place for them, right?
That's correct.
Yep, okay.
Well, it'll be for a few months, ta, for the time period in which it takes us to build that building.
Right.
Yeah.
And for them to finish it out, which is gonna be a long one. Okay, so let's move on then.
I make a motion, we table item seven E.
Okay.
That's good.
Second, okay. Bruce, second, is all in favor? Okay, that, it is, it is, uh, it is tabled then. Item F, uh, twenty-five, two, twenty twenty-five dash oh nine, appointment of the planning and zoning committee, building committee and PFC boards. Will, who are, who are the, who are the nominees?
Sure, um, for the planning and zoning, we have Bob Powers, pardon me if I get anybody's name pronounced incorrectly. Uh, Darren Galatas, Priscilla Muse, Larry Latshaw, and David Williams. For the building committee is Mike Shaw, Trent Edge, Mike Clark, Steve Nash, and Anthony Szysinski. And then for the PFC is Carolyn Richmond, John Travis, Barbara Peskin, Rob Paul, and Johnny Thompson. In terms detailed in your packet for resolution twenty twenty-five oh nine.
Already these do have never been on before?
I'm not sure if any are brand-new.
I think most of them are either, either reappointed for full term or already on, or already on, but they haven't finished their term yet. So... This, this package, this page, uh, one twenty-seven here in the package, uh, I guess, lists all the people, so can we, word of motion that, uh, describes, describes these people, and, uh, we can read a point of these people?
I think we can just do the resolution.
Yeah, let's just do the resolution.
Yeah, please.
I make a motion that we accept resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh nine, appointment of planning and zoning committee, building committee, and PFC board as stated.
They're in your packet.
In the packet.
Okay, second, Barbara seconded, all in favor of these nominees? Okay, they're new people. Okay, uh, last item is gonna be, uh, dark sky efforts.
All right, I'm su, I'm sure most people are aware of what dark skies is.
Most people are not aware, they have a misconception of what it is.
Okay, well, it's a, it's a effort primarily in Texas to try to make it basically so there's less lights, light pollution. Uh, there are some grants out there to help with those efforts, um, and I wanted to see if the city council wanted to pursue this for the community metal lakes. Um, you know, doesn't mean we have to commit to it, but if I'm gonna be, give only a little time, uh, I wanted to touch base with all of you first.
Why don't you explain it a little bit more in detail? It's, it has to do with lights, it doesn't have to do with having less lighting in the city, which is a lot of people, I mean, the, the word implies that it's a lot less lighting, but that's not, that's nothing further than true. It's, the lights go down and light where you need it, instead of lighting up fifty feet in the air. The only time you need to light up there is if you're looking for a flag, uh, see if the flags are the flag boat. So, you really don't need the lights up in the air, you need them down here, so what it is, is makes domes and, uh, you know, deflectors, so it makes the light go where you wanna have it. And I don't, I don't agree with, uh, I don't think we ought to, personally, it's just my opinion, I'm just talking out loud, but, uh, thinking out loud, but I'd hate to make it mandatory. I, I wouldn't mind making it mandatory if someone's a new build or if someone's gonna redo their lights, the building committee can say, "Yeah, you need to have them pointed downward."
Well...
I wish we had more lights in the community, I mean, gosh, you can't even see it. Yeah, terrible, I mean, we need lights, we need streetlights desperately.
Okay, this is not anything to do with whether we need more lights or not, it's whether the existing lights in people's houses are, should be pointed down, pointed up and, and lighting the sky.
Well, I've wasted effort on this, and we really need to get lights in the, in the community.
Okay.
Well, what I would...
Those are good comments, I agree.
What I would suggest is that we get a description of what dark sky is and what kinds of things, and that, they're doing it over in, uh, in the park, in Marble Falls. If you'll notice the lights that they've put up on their new walkway, they all are, are down. But I think it's just letting people know that there are options, uh, so that if they wanted to do something, but we have a lot of peo, older homes that had like freestanding lights, because that's just the way they used to build them, or lights that were built on top of, of mailboxes and that kind of thing. But I think just mainly letting people know that, really, more of a definition of what this is and the kinds of lights, just to, to let them know that this is going on and that the effort is going on also in Marble Falls. Obviously, it's not a hundred percent.
Yeah.
But it, if they would like to participate so they would understand more about what it means.
Yeah.
But I wouldn't see right now that we would pursue this.
No, I think just to inform people that, you know, so people know, hang on a minute, so that people will know that if they're replacing your lights outside, hey, maybe consider this, 'cause I think it's a good idea. Steve, were you gonna say something?
Well, I was just gonna comment that this has become an industry standard, a dark sky friendly light fixture. So, when you buy the light fixture, you buy the sign. It's not one that just beams the light straight out like a headlight or a car beam, it's indirect, it bounces back against the wall. We've been using them for years, they're very popular, they're a softer light that doesn't, doesn't glare. And, and, and as a result, there's not as much, uh, light going up into the sky. When you go, I went out last night to try to see the meteor shower, I couldn't begin to, we, we had such a glow coming off of the parking lot that they had, they had, that, that... We, we're not even close to nice guy, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, uh, uh, but if we, if we chose to start using those type of fixtures that are designed to do that, I think that would be the extent of, of, of ordinance or enforcement from the building committee.
Yeah, and I think Home Depot sells those, there's a, there's a, there's a code number and all that stuff that has them, so it's, uh... I would encourage people to do that if they, if you're gonna replace your porch lights and so, and so forth. Richard, I'll...
I got a question.
Just FYI, we don't usually call on people, but I'll call on Richard.
I was just curious about people that have an American flag outside their house with a light on it?
Yeah, I mean, it's right now, that's totally legal, that's, that's fine.
I mean, is that gonna be illegal, if, with the dark sky?
It might be.
We'll never make the flag illegal, but there's...
Flags are not illegal.
There's lighting styles, just like you have porch light, you can have one that's very bright and illuminates the whole street, or one that's illuminating the porch. So, absolutely, the, the American flag could still be illuminated.
Yeah, and you can look at the internet, and, and you can find some that are very tasteful and very nice, very, very, very nice looking. But, like I say, I don't wanna be, I don't wanna be signing an ordinance that says, "You must tear down your lights and replace them with these." I just don't think, I wouldn't be that heavy-handed on this thing.
I think some education to them.
I think education is a great thing, though, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I won't, won't be this week.
Right.
I will. I think I did one time, and some guy wrote me and said, you know, we, you know, he had the wrong impression, because like, like, it's kind of a misleading term.
Yeah.
Because dark sky implies there's no lights, so, it's, that's, that totally misleads normal people. Okay, enough of that. Uh, I have no major, any, any announcements or, uh, awards or anything like that, if anyone in council has any, uh, announcements to make?
Is it, is there a, uh...
Is there a...
Hazardous.
Hazardous waste?
Yeah.
Yeah, hazardous waste?
Yeah.
When is that?
Saturday, twenty-third.
I think it's a Saturday, yeah.
This coming Saturday?
Yeah.
What times, Will, do you know?
Nine to one, I think it was.
Nine to one?
Nine to one.
Yeah.
And where?
In Burnet.
Same spot as usual, yeah.
Burnet.
Yeah, all nine sixty-three, let's, let's, if you go, you go north on two eighty-one to nine sixty-three, take a right, you have the signs, you're corrected to...
Is that like a boat, like, you know, batteries or...
This is everything, this is insecticide, best of signs as well.
Mark, when you do your new litter, just put that little...
I will.
How you get there, that whole people.
Oh. Oh, let me write that down. Johnny, say that again?
Uh...
Two eighty-one.
Two eighty-one, north of Burnet.
Through Burnet.
You go through Burnet, before you get to the high school, before you get to the high school. You turn right on nine sixty-three with the signs.
There's a light, there's a light there. No, there is, I was through there today.
Okay.
I was, I go there a lot.
Yeah, there is a light there.
Yeah.
And you'll turn nine sixty-three, uh, and you'll continue about two miles, two and a half miles, and you'll be on the right, there'll be another sign in direction then.
Yeah.
Great idea.
It's on the BoPAC, if you pull up the BoPAC deal, it's, all declarations are on there, or, it's not BoPAC this time, but...
BoPAC.
It's on...
Where's the BoPAC?
Well, it's in the newsletter, it's in the newsletter.
Oh. Oh, you may, on your, your side of the newsletter, okay. Okay, it'll be, okay, it'll be in the newsletter, but not in the mayor's corner, Barbara. Since you're putting it in anyway. Next meeting is gonna be, uh, Tuesday, November eighteenth, and that's the week before Thanksgiving, not the week of Thanksgiving, so, uh, that's it.
Good job.
Will, I wanna go with these documents, part of the packet, for council members.
Which ones, uh...
Oh.
This has to do with fraud inquiries from mayor and council members.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, those are, uh, the auditors asking you questions that, uh, you should fill out to the best of your abilities, and if you have any questions, um, so it's asking you questions about you, see any weaknesses where fraud may occur, or if you have any, uh...
Any conflicts of interest.
And relatives and...
Relatives that, that are doing business with the city and that type of thing.
Is that the one from Nissen Door?
Yeah, that's...
Oh, I've already sent that.
They were handed out at the last meeting in my...
Yeah, that's right, you weren't...
Yeah, I've had...
I submit, I mailed mine.
I mailed mine in right away.
Okay, so, I, 'cause I wasn't here.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, okay, all it...
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Make it, are you, is there a second? All in favor of adjourning? Meeting's adjourned, what do you need, Richard?
Today, early voting started.
It was, it started, it started, uh, Monday, Mondays, yesterday, yeah, the...
But we need to vote.
Seventeen propositions.
That'll be, that will be in the newsletter, and it will be, uh, I don't know what, what it is, it's gonna be, uh, seventeen propositions, and early voting ends on, uh... Early voting ends on Halloween.